Call to order, the Dunellen City Council Workshop, July 3rd. If everyone would stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would anyone like to lead us in a prayer? We would just like to have a moment of silence. Amen. Okay, Michelle.
Mayor Dunn.
Here.
Vice Mayor Inskey.
Here.
Councilperson Mendonza.
Here.
Councilman Lehman.
Here.
Councilwoman Covage.
Here.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer.
Here.
Kelly Yen, Community Development.
Here.
Chad Ward, Public Works Manager.
Here.
Chief Scott Leong.
Here.
Lieutenant Bragg.
Here.
Then we have Andrew Hand, City Attorney.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Monday, June 26th, and was amended on June 29th to add new agenda items, number 14 and number 15.
All right, I want to make a few announcements first. In case of emergency, please remember that the exits are marked. One is behind you where you're sitting, and one would be to your right, in case that happens. The next thing we're going to have is public comments. I ask everyone to please be courteous of everyone and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Is anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Viola Sofe. Viola Sofe, 18755 Southwest 60th Street, Dunellen, Florida. The city really seems concerned about us renting our properties to sex offenders and child traffickers, which is the farthest thing from the truth. Our properties are a source of income. Why would we put ourselves in jeopardy, be arrested, or thrown in jail? Most of us have more brains than that. If the city is so concerned they should charge in their backyard. Do you know how many sex offenders actually live in the city of Dunellen? Does the police know where they live? I've spoken to a 17-year veteran of the Marion County probation office. She lives as senior supervisor. Do you know there was a gentleman arrested and charged in 2007 for assaulting a minor? Now lives on Camp Drive in Blue Cove. Or the one that was arrested and charged in 2003 for child abuse? And also was rearrested for failure to register. He lives on Palm Street in historic district. The other two live in Chatmire. One was arrested in 2008 for looting and lascivious action against a child under the age of 16. He lives on 107th Place. The other one was arrested in 1999, plus was rearrested again for failure to register. He was also charged with looting and lascivious action against a child under 16. He lives on 196th Court in Chatmire. She says it's hard to keep track of sex traffickers. They spend most of their time going around from place to place, using motels that charge by the hour. I don't think any hotels here in Dunellen charge by the hour. And drug trafficking, she said, you have to go to Chatmire. That's where she spent most of her time arresting individuals on drug charges. Since the state and county law enforcement are in charge of this area of criminal behavior, why does the city feel the owners of short-term rentals need to do the exact same thing that the state and the county do with the laws that are already on the books? All homeowners and renters are both vetted by Airbnb and Verbo, even before they're allowed to join. I had to fill out an application, prove to them the same information that you're asking us to prove of our tenants. And I had to wait until they satisfied that I was not a sex offender. I was not a child abuser. I was not a sex trafficker, and I was not a drug dealer. They finally agreed to list my property. I guess I passed their scrutiny. I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Paula Cogar.
Hi, my name is Paula Cogar, 11983 Palmata Way, Dunellen, Florida. I am here to just tell you how awesome these policemen, sheriffs, whatever they are, have been in this city. I have never in my life seen so much kindness, so much responsibility, so much results, so much willingness to go back again and get the job done. No, really, that's, there's something. And, and they have cleared off, the, the, the steps have been cleared off of the trees, and there are only people hugging the trees like this. And I know they're wearing their bodies out, so they won't be doing it every day, all day. And then there's, there are fewer people in boats exactly in front of our house and all this stuff. But the alarming thing is, they did what they said they would do, and they keep doing it. How many times have I seen that in my life? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
David Cogar.
My name is David Cogar. I live at 11983 Palmata Way, Dunellen, Florida. The last time I was up here, I explained that my rental house in Gainesville, I had to pay a fee a couple of years ago. It was $122 a year. It went up to $200 and something, so I, I sold the house. Also failed to mention that with that fee came a requirement that the owner of the property, in this case maybe the owner of the rental situation, has to fill out a self-inspection report verifying that you have fire extinguishers, verifying that you have the smoke detectors, and verifying that you've done what you can to that house to make it energy efficient. So, a fee for a rental, a rental is a business. And if it's going to be a business, and they're going to be registered in, here in the, in the city, and we're going to have to regulate it and watch over it and be somewhat responsible for it, a reasonable fee is reasonable. And it's also, and the, the city's a business. There's been some things the city's done that have been great. And maybe we made a little bit of money on them. There have been some things the city have done that have been terrible, and we've lost a lot of money on them. So, this is a situation where we need to look closely at the fee we're going to charge for short-term rentals. And the other thing I would like to suggest is that, you know, we live in a situation that's critical to this short-term rental place because a lot of those people, when the state park fills up, their next option is right in front of our house. And they don't, I know the, the police department, my wife said they've been great. They have been more than great. They put signs up, they coordinated with DEP and everybody else to, to get signs up. The kids keep tearing them down. Matter of fact, I, I called Officer Ron today and let him know they tore them down. I, I went swimming, dug the sign back up and cleared it up against a tree, and tell them we can get it permanently installed again. But the, the thing is, I think if we had a requirement that these short-term rentals had a worksheet that lists, these are available places to go, and these are not-to-go places. If you go there, you're going to be fined. So, I think that if we could somehow get that in the ordinance, and I'd be willing to participate in putting together that worksheet, or a map, or whatever we need to do to, to make that happen, to get that part of the ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Yes, sir. Nobody else has signed up, and no one is on Zoom.
Okay, all right. Well, I appreciate the public comments. I know this is a very touchy issue with a lot of folks, so we're going to try to work through it. Okay, board reports. Do we have any board reports?
Brenda Jarville, 11661 Camp Drive, Chair, Dunellen Planning Commission. Due to work commitment, I was absent the last meeting. However, our planning commission was able to complete two site reviews and pass them on to council for approval. And when I spoke with the planning department today with Kelly, she said they were passed on with no exceptions or no conditions required. And that was for PS Coffee LLC, which will be a little coffee shop. There'll be a parking lot there off of Williams Street. And then Heart of Florida Health Center, that's on 19204 East Pennsylvania. That's looking for an expansion of the building. So you'll be having that come up or reviewed your next meeting. And then I think we have just a couple more modules to go through to complete our training program that was gifted to us by, by the council. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other board reports? Okay. Dunellen Chamber and Business Association report. Hey, Judy.
Okay. We have a few new members. We have the Art of Grieving Counseling Service. We have Citrus Grill and the Dunellen Community Thrift Store. And then we have a bunch of upcoming events. July 5th, the Dunellen Public Library has a Shake It Up Storytime from 11:00 to 12:00. July 6th, the Dunellen Public Library again has Stream Dreams from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. On July 12th, they have a Shake It Up Storytime again, 11:00 to 12:00. On the 13th, they have the Stream Dreams from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. On July 14th, we have our next Business After Hours event at the Grace for Today Massage Therapy at 6:00 p.m. On July 17th, we have a ribbon cutting at 1:00 p.m. for the Art of Grieving, and they're located at 20757 West Pennsylvania Avenue. On the 19th, the Public Library again has Shake It Up Storytime from 11:00 to 12:00. On the 20th, they have the Stream Dreams again from 3:00 to 5:00. On the 21st, they have Novels at Night from 4:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. On July 28th, we have another ribbon cutting for Advanced Family Hearings, new location at 20093 East Pennsylvania Avenue, and that will be at 2:00 p.m. And then on August 22nd, we have our next Dinner Mixer at the Holy Faith Episcopal Church in Blue Cove at 5:30 p.m. Dinners are $20 for members and $25 for non-members. And then on September 26th, we have another Dinner Mixer at the Boys and Girls Club of Dunellen. And again, the dinners are $20 for members and $25 for non-members. That's all we have to do.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Okay, item number four, discussion, planning commission appointment. Brenda, you want?
No, I have no idea. This is something Kelly or someone else.
So, is, Ms. Ladies, are you, is that you?
Yes.
Do you want to come on up, please? This is Ms. Ladies Cardenas. And she put in her application to be a planning commission member. And it's been referred to y'all.
Right.
I believe the board is full, and you're just looking for alternates at this point.
That's fine, that's fine, I understand.
So you all would like to approve her.
Okay.
For appointment? You would do that at your council meeting on Wednesday.
Okay. Ms. Cardenas is a very good friend of mine. Y'all probably won't believe this, since I've been living in Dunellen, she's given me my haircut. Twice, in seven years.
I know, I make no money with you.
About every two to three years, I get a haircut. And she helps me with that. Great lady. And anyway, anybody else have any comments about Ms. Ladies?
I don't know Ms. Ladies at all, but I do always, I, I notice your business in town, and I appreciate how well-kept it is. There's clearly a lot of pride in your small-town business. So I'm really pleased that you step forward to be on the, be on the planning commission, and we welcome you.
Thank you.
I'm in the same boat as you with the haircut.
Boy, get the rain.
No, I just moved up here, and I'd like to recommend you to my wife. So that she gets to meet more people in Dunellen, too.
Jan, you have any comments?
Me?
Yeah.
Since COVID, I've been cutting my hair. And it probably looks it.
Oh, no, no, that's great. But no, and if you ever have gone into her shop, it's amazing what she has done, not only on the outside of her shop, but what she's done on the inside of her shop. It is absolutely beautiful in there, even though I don't go there every two years. But no, I think you clearly project a good image for our town and a small business, and I think you'd be a great addition to our council, for sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right.
Consent?
That's it.
Do you want that on consent?
Yes. All right. Find out where I am. Okay. Got that done. All right. Discussion on ordinance 2022-05, Vacation Rental. I know we just had a special meeting on this subject and got to a point where we were going to think about it and decide which direction we were going to go. And I guess what we need to have a discussion on now is how does everybody feel about the ordinance? And what direction do we want to go? Tiffany?
Okay, so, in keeping, just with number five, I just really hope that we're sort of pointed in what we're trying to get at. We did have two special workshops. The last workshop was, I think, a helpful discussion to try to just get us all on the same page and understand the basis of what we want. I hope that we could plan another timely workshop because I think that keeping this in a special workshop setting is really helpful. I think it is a big discussion. I think there's a lot of public interest about it, and I would hate for us to kind of unravel it in a spot now where we have a meeting that's, we have a very long agenda. I know that there's been some developments, perhaps, that we're going to be, you know, made aware of that may impact our decision from a legal standpoint. And so I would like to see this deferred to a special meeting. That's my feeling, thank you.
Okay. Tim, do you have any thoughts on this? I know we were kind of at a crossroads of which way we were going to go or what we were going to do next, so.
Yeah. I think we still have some details to work out. It's going to take a special meeting to do it, not this type of a meeting, to work out how we're going to go forward. I know there is some new information that I think Andrew is going to, well, at least I was going to ask if he touched base on, on this SB 170. If there's a short version, if there's not a short version, well, maybe we make a short version, and we can expound on it in a special meeting and figure it out from there.
Okay. Yeah, that, Andrew pointed me to that, I guess it was Friday, and then I found a couple more articles on it over the weekend. For y'all in the audience, what happened apparently in the last legislative session, this 170 was, was passed and our governor signed it, which, I may say this all wrong, but in my view, it hurts home rule a little bit from where we were. Home rule being cities and communities could govern themselves kind of at arm's length and away from the state or just do things they wanted to. And if anything, this to me has hurt what is called home rule. And Andrew, you want to expand on that a little bit?
Sure, I could, I could address it for about five minutes or so. Now, I was going to address it during attorney comments, but it's, it's very relevant.
Yeah.
Essentially, I'll address it from the standpoint that Senate Bill 170 will change the way that the city adopts ordinances in the future. It'll change the way that all local governments adopt ordinances in the future, both counties and cities. And it's one of those ones that, it's an ordinance, or pardon me, not an ordinance, but a statute that had been tracking. It came up in 2022. It was, it, this particular bill didn't come up in 2022, but a similar bill came up in 2022, and ultimately, it was adopted and enrolled by the legislature, but the governor vetoed it. There have been some amendments to this particular version, and late Thursday night, the governor did in fact sign the bill, and so it is law. Well, it will become law October 1st. This is a prospective statute, so it will only apply to ordinances adopted after October 1st, or ordinances that amend ordinances after October 1st, just the amendment portion. So, anything that you all adopt before October 1st should not be affected. So there are some things, you know, that perhaps should be expedited to go ahead and get them on the books, simply because, not to try to avoid this particular law, but it does require, it does have some procedural, some, some more rigorous procedural obligations that the city has to comply with for some projects for a long time that, you know, it hasn't had to do so. So, just something to think about as far as timing. What the bill essentially does, there's a few different parts of it. And just touching on it quickly, there is an attorney's fee provision. There already is a, it expands on Chapter 57. There's a law in place that allows for prevailing party attorney's fees for preemption for any type of ordinance that is preempted by state law. This expands that to ordinances that are arbitrary or unreasonable, essentially arbitrary and capricious type of standard, and caps attorney fees at the amount of $50,000. So no matter what, that would be the amount that the city could be on the hook for. Now, it goes both ways, but of course, in order to get attorney's fees, you're, you're going, you know, to a point where there is prevailing party, not a settlement type of situation. And, you know, quite often, it's something that's worked out in the interim. Some of the nuances for this law, and there is part of this law that does correct something as far as meeting notices, it's not really relevant now, it's something I'll discuss with Mandy. I think I can bring that back later because it's, it's procedural and not probably of the most interest to you all at this time. So there is another element of it, but skipping past that and looking at how the actual ordinance part works. I'm just skipping to the municipality part here because the county part is basically identical to the counties. But at the time, at least prior to the final advertisement, there needs to be essentially a checklist completed. One, and it's generally information that needs to be posted on the city's website. One is a summary of the proposed ordinance, including a statement of the public purpose of the ordinance. You see that in staff reports already, you see it in the whereas clause of the ordinance. That'll be something very easy to comply with. Some of the new things that are coming along, an estimate of the direct economic impact of the proposed ordinance on private or profit businesses in the municipality, including an estimate of direct compliance costs that businesses may reasonably incur if the ordinance becomes law, identification of any new charge or fee on businesses subject to proposed ordinance, or for which a business will be responsible, an estimate of the municipality's regulatory costs, a good faith estimate of the number of businesses likely to be impacted by the ordinance, and any additional information the local government finds useful. A lot of this, of course, is done during your budgeting process, but it becomes very pointed and something that is required for any type of an ordinance. Now, there are exceptions. This does not apply to ordinances required to comply with federal or state law. It's not required for ordinances relating to refinancing or issuing of debt. It doesn't apply to budgets, so your budget system will not change when you're going through budgets, you are right now. It does not apply to ordinances required to implement contracts, including, but not limited to, federal, state, local, any type of grants. So that's good news. It does not apply to emergency ordinances. Hurricanes and flooding, for instance, will not be impacted. You all have to do something very quickly. And it does not apply to Part 2 of Chapter 163, which is the Florida Growth Management Act relating to growth policy, county or municipal planning, land development regulation, including zoning, development orders, VAs, development agreements, and development permits. So, one of the interesting things, and one of the things the city can look at in tailoring legislation, is looking through what goes in a comprehensive plan and essentially running it through the LDR process. What I think makes me scratch my head as a practitioner is, well, typically you have ordinances that will touch on land use elements, and they'll be in LDRs, but they may have a different aspect to them. Don't yet know how the courts will be treating that, and I'm going to a conference, we'll be discussing that, I'm certain, this week. So hopefully I'll get some more information on the bill and some of the discussions from the legislature, some information to bring you back at the next meeting. Some of the important things to also touch on, about to wrap it up here because it's a lot of information, I know. When a, when there is, if there ever is a legal challenge to an ordinance that goes through this process, or just legal challenges, really, this would also apply to, to growth targeted ordinances. If there is a challenge, a municipality has to suspend enforcement of an ordinance that is subject to the challenge if the action was filed with the court and later than 90 days after adoption, if the plaintiff requests that suspension of the ordinance be a remedy, and if the municipality's been served with a copy of the complaint petition. So it gives a 90-day window for essentially members of the public who may be affected to challenge ordinances and then asked to temporarily at least come off the books regardless of merit of the claim. That's probably the part that really has a lot of impact, I think, you know, on home rule.
Sure.
Essentially wipes something clean for a period of time. And one of the things also to keep in mind, and there's a list of exceptions and they apply, basically the same that I had read out here. There is a, also a section that provides a remedy that, basically, to avoid attorney's fees in the case of a dispute. If the government repeals, a local government repeals an ordinance after a challenge within 30 days of receiving the lawsuit, then the local government would not be on the hook for any of that attorney's fees, or the other side. So there's a little savings clause in there. So if something goes out quickly and, you know, there was a lawsuit with some potential merit, there's a period of time to, basically a chilling period to take a look at everything and then, you know, make a plan of going forward. That's essentially the backbone and some of the nuances of the law. So you can see how it, it certainly makes crafting legislation procedurally a bit more onerous for the city. And there's also a few more pitfalls to decide step in the case of a challenge of a particular ordinance.
Sure, okay. Anybody got any questions? The only thing I heard you say, and it's kind of what I've read, too, is if the ordinance mirrors state and federal law, then this really doesn't have an effect on home rule. Am I reading that right? As long as we apply it the same way?
If it's implementing, if it's required to implement it. So, you know, ordinances can mirror certain types of regulations, but it may not be implementation. So it, it would be highly specific to what kind of legislation is being crafted.
Okay, okay. The other thing that you pointed out is if we're going to move forward, to me, it sounds like we need to get this finished in September, just to basically, for better term, be grandfathered into whatever we do, if that's what I'm hearing.
Whatever projects the city's working on right now, yes, if those were adopted prior to October 1st, then they would normally be affected. And, you know, if they need to be amended afterwards.
Right, then that changes.
The amendment itself would be subject to the law, but not the actual laws and rules.
Okay. I agree with you, Zouanne, that we probably need to schedule another meeting. And I would say, based on that last item, sooner rather than later.
Agreed.
I don't know what everybody's schedule is. We do have a meeting on the 12th. After that, unfortunately, I am very free. Take a day. I mean, I'm good. I'm going to be out of town the last week of July. Okay, all right. How about the week of the 17th through the 21st? You're good. What about you, Jan? You're good? Tim and Zouanne, y'all good? One second. It would have been, but you missed my thing, yeah. Week of the? 17th through the 21st. 17th through the 21st.
Of this month.
Right.
Yeah, I look good.
How about the 17th? On a Monday, two weeks from the duck. That work? That work, y'all? I think, yeah, if we're gonna move forward with anything, we need to get this resolved and decide how we're gonna do it and move it. And now we've kind of pushed into a short period of time, and I know we have to give, what is it, seven days notice on an agenda and all that mess, so, okay. All right, let's do the 17th at whatever time.
4:30.
4:30? 4:30? All right, 4:30 on the 17th. Okay.
Well, as we planned out for the 17th...
Do what now, excuse me?
Where, one of the reasons we came back to this was because we were gonna have Andrew do some notations.
Right.
In the ordinance. Is there any actions that need to occur prior to the 17th for us to be ready for our discussion? Or?
I don't know. I would think, well, we could actually add something to Nick's, the meeting agenda to address something like that, because that's still out there. Wednesday week would be when we're gonna have the next meeting, the 12th, right?
Yes.
So, if we wanna add something to that agenda on short-term rentals, precede this. Is that what you're talking about? Trying to have a catch-up meeting? I mean, not a catch-up meeting, but a discussion?
Yeah, without getting, without getting too in the weeds, if we could come back on Wednesday, the 12th, and come to a consensus about what we think it would be helpful for Andrew to have, well, that's not gonna give him...
No, I don't give him right, because that's gonna be that evening. You'd have to have ready, that's only really two, maybe three days of us.
Yeah. So, we'll just come together on the 17th and decide our next steps?
Well, I think last time we got to a point where it was either gonna be, we'll do an ordinance requiring, and please, if I say something y'all don't agree with, let me know, but I got the impression was we really got two options if we're gonna go forward with an ordinance, is one, have one basically be an ordinance where all the short-term rentals are required to register, and by register, they also must register with the Department of Business and Professional Regulation in Tallahassee and do their requirements, and then register with us as well. The other option would be take that ordinance and have that in it, plus additional items. And again, I'm, in my mind now, I'm thinking, can we get all this done by the end of September? You know, is that even possible? Of course, we gotta have two readings and all that, but we got the month of August and September, we could do something, I guess.
It is possible, and what you can look at is a prospective type of schedule, perhaps with adoption for September, if you are looking at a deadline, regardless of the route you go, trying to get everything done in final direction by the end of August, because you would have enough time in September. Now, Mandy would need to know for the advertisements, and we'd have to decide on, you know, get that all set. So, that'll take a little bit of planning as well when she returns, but you could do a schedule in September where you had a first reading by council to make sure you're good with the ordinance, and then sent to planning for just their comprehensive plan consistency review after first reading. Typically, that happens before first reading, but where we've had time constraints in the past, you know, that's a perfectly fine way of doing it. And so long as the ordinance isn't changing and so forth, then you have your second reading. And, you know, as long as the dates all line up and everything, that can be accomplished with, you know, a second special meeting in September.
Okay.
And we would certainly have ample time for public input with that schedule.
Yeah, yeah, well, it just, of course, the public input, yeah, you have to take it at public hearing, and it has to be taken at, you know, those are the minimums for a public hearing, and as well at the planning commission, since they're doing the consistency review. So, those would be two obligate times where they have to be to satisfy state law, and of course, the city has its own rules for regular meetings where public comment has to be taken. So, there'll be more, there'll be more public comment than is necessary to satisfy minimum state requirements.
Right. Personally, and again, I won't influence what everybody's thinking, but to me, if we're gonna move forward with this, I think keeping in mind the items that we have discussed are these, again, state requirements that are already state law, that we're just gonna make part of our done Ellen ordinance, or are these gonna go further than that, and how important those may be? I think for all of us, that's what we need to kind of think about. Okay? All right?
Thank you.
So, yeah, so now that we're prepared, are we gonna kind of take off from where we left last time, where we were going through the regulations, and we're okay with this one, comments, tweak, another one type thing, and then get to a registration point? I'm not sure what to prepare for. You know, I know it was a little bit confusing last time, but it was, I didn't think it was, definitely not impossible. It was impossible for the audience, the verisimac and foreign documents and progress going back and forth.
Right.
So, I was a little bit cumbersome, it was doable, unless somebody thinks different, and we did gain ground on the regulations. And many of the comments that we're getting from the public are stuff that we haven't looked at yet. So, maybe if we can get through some of those regulations.
Sure.
Okay, then just by default of that, some of their concerns may just go, you know, may go away.
Sure, okay, that's fine, let's do that. Let's finish up what we're doing.
My input on this conversation, it's going on back and forth here. As I recall, and I am getting old, but I do recall that we had gotten to a point where we said, woe on this, putting the cart before the horse, before we put this ordinance through, let's talk about the economic feasibility of this for, for our, to implement it. It's one thing to write it together, it's the implement, can the city even afford to do this? I mean, we know there are constraints in our budget that are, you know, as I have been listening to Jan, this city's pretty much in a financial straitjacket. We just need to, you know, and as I recall, as that meeting ended, we said, hey, a train hand conferred with all of us, let's start with, quote, a skeletal ordinance, have short-term rental owners register with the city, and they must communicate with Marion County Fire and Safety and set up an appointment and stop there. Okay, and of course, the appointment is about fire and safety inspection. Okay, and that would be very simple, wouldn't be a burden on staff, and wouldn't, wouldn't even have to collect a bunch of, how shall I say it? Ordinance checkoff list for inspections, like Dave Porter is pushing us to do. It's not good enough that Marion County has their list of a checkoff list for inspections. We gotta do something like a really super, okay, Dave Porter sent us all an email he got, saying that gave the checkoff list for the city of Coral Gables, and, which is wonderful, except for one thing, Coral Gables has a budget, I'm sorry, has a revenue input, checked it out, $424 million per year. That's tech, tax, adlorum taxes, and commercial planning fees and so on. Okay, so we cannot jump right ahead to October 1st and say, gotta get done by October 1st, because then people, somebody might object and put the, put the brakes on this, if they go to challenge it, or it is a legal challenge. Let's go back to how we ended that last meeting. As Andrew said, and we agreed, a skeletal ordinance, have the people through an ordinance who own these rentals and manage them, register with the city, and that part of that registration and the paperwork that they would sign off on says, you have to communicate with Marion County. And then that leads to the problem is Marion County's been telling us, their chief of inspections, they can't put a calendar date for these 50-some short-term rentals to get inspected. So, we have to work with the county, and we have to be, how shall I say it, fair to the people who have these short-term rentals, that we can't impose a certain date and so on. So, let's go back to that plan, register, and they must get an appointment. Even if the county can't give them an appointment, at least maybe out there two or three months, they can get the appointment. Okay, that's where I would like this to go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Jan, that's, well, my intent is also to get some of that done, the checklist and all the other stuff, I agree, that's gotta hold off. But to even get to the registration part, we gotta get through some of these.
You have to get an ordinance, right.
Well, we gotta get through some of these, what we're calling regulations, okay, and they're either part of it or not part of it, and we move on to get to the registration process. And then everything else will be fitted at a later date. But I'm sure I didn't word it well enough, but we're looking at a payment process to get, well, at least in my mind, you know, to get to the registration part, but to do that, we have to go through some of these regulations and see which ones are gonna be part, because it's still gonna be an ordinance either way, whether it's just to register or not, we have to have an ordinance just to do that, and to get through that process.
Yeah, I'd like to question Andrew then, is there any way that this ordinance can be wrote and keep it open-ended? In other words, what, if you guys wanna push to that October 1st date, could we put part of this ordinance together and put, and go ahead and start enacting it? And I'm talking about that part would be the registration, and that those persons who are owner managers must set up some kind of communications with Marion County Fire Safety Inspection, and leave it at that?
I think the city has, you know, flexibility here, you know, and the October 1st deadline is when this law comes on, that, you know, it's gonna affect every law in the world the city ever writes, as long as this is on the books. I don't know if it'll be on the books forever. So, really, you all can go in the direction that you wanna go. If you want to, you know, you can, you can take an ordinance and even break it up, so you have the registration and so forth, and you have the other ones, and still adopt them all at the same time. They don't, you know, really, you could proceed in about a million different ways, if that, if that helps the way, just trying to answer your question. So, yes, you can create, you know, just a simple pointed registration ordinance, and then the other aspects of it can also be adopted, and either adopted prior to October 1st, or put off, or registration can be put off. I mean, you have the time to go in any direction that you wish to. For October 1st, it's tight no matter what, that's true, and we know that these are very time-consuming meetings. So, there is some pressure there trying to beat the October 1st deadline. That is obvious, yes.
Well, it said, can we get this done by the end of September? Can you get your pick up on that?
Go ahead.
Can I go first, Jan?
Yeah, I wanna address a few points, and I think that this is getting really blown out of proportion, in that basically it comes down to three parts. One, registration. How much is it gonna cost? I saw the email where the ladies, the one lady saying it's gonna cost half a million dollars, $100,000. We have to split this among 40 people, it's gonna be, it's gonna financially ruin them. You're gonna pay a business tax of $70. You're gonna have to pay for a fire inspection, you're gonna have to pay for the company to come out and inspect your fire extinguishers, and maybe a building inspection, and then whatever cost we put in to pass around, to pass off the legislation. I understand there's software out there that we could get that'll track these things, that if we add that on, so say it costs $300 or $400. So, in terms of running a business, with what you get from a short-term rental, it's not a big expenditure, so that's one. Number two, the second part of it, the statutes for fire code, those are, those are set in stone. It doesn't matter who enforces them, they're set in stone. If you are running a short-term rental, and you have something happen, and you come out, and those things, the inspections haven't been done, you're gonna get a $1,000 fine, and you're gonna get shut down right there, your people are gonna move, are gonna, are gonna have to vacate their premises. So, basically, we're not banking a bunch of new laws, we're just saying we're putting the state of Florida laws, statutes, in the ordinance, so that'd be the second part. Then the third part, the three main things everybody, I think, is really upset about. Parking, occupancy, and noise. So, really, we don't want somebody looking at a house saying, hey, I've got 3,200 square feet according to this ordinance, I can divide it by 70, put armor in each one, and call it 10 bedrooms, or how many? Because the problem isn't one short-term rental guy doing it and adding three beds, the problem is 50 short-term rental people doing it and adding three beds, which is at 150 people, which is a load on Dunell. And I've talked with the chief today, and for noise, we can set up a committee of, one of us on the committee, since two of us can't be there, short-term rental people and maybe a couple other people, we can go out, have somebody put a speaker up, see how loud it is, decimeters are very cheap, we can buy a decimeter for every police car, and a small rangefinder, and we can go in and measure the noise, say, this is it, this far away. And then the chief has said, as he said before, we have noise-abating ordinance, and they will find it. So, and the parking? We can set the parking to the number of bedrooms plus one car, and all the cars have to be on the proper. And, you know, it doesn't sound too, too unreasonable, so my suggestion is, if we're gonna do it, let's have the meeting on the 17th, let's work on the first part, registration. Let's get the numbers of what it's gonna cost, what we are actually required to do, what we want, and then we can sit here maybe an hour and hopefully get it sorted out along with staff's help. So, and then the second one, we can look at the fire code. In Marion County, if they have to do the inspection, they're gonna have their own list, we don't need to develop one.
Thank you.
And then for the third one, we'll have a month, hopefully in a very short time, if we have some short-term rental people in here, we can discuss if the things we're proposing are out of line, because we're looking out for the good of everybody. So, that would be my suggestion, is let's just start the next meeting on our registration.
My thought in a nutshell is that we have spent a lot, not just us, but the previous council, spent a lot of time on this ordinance. I think for us to shortcut now and say, let's just do a registration and worry about the rest of it later, is gonna be a tremendous disservice to all of the energy that's put into this. I think that we're capable of taking the current ordinance, making some simplifications. I'm hearing a lot of grief about sexual offenders, human trafficking stuff, I think all of that is very, the ability to compromise on that and simplify things makes sense. I am on board with, not with step implementation of, let's implement registration, then let's revisit the rest of it later. I think we need to look at the whole ordinance, need to simplify it, like Tim is saying, go through the rest of it, pass the whole thing, and yes, we don't have the staff to do it right now, there's a lot of resources that we don't have to implement the whole thing, but it doesn't have to be implemented, we can pass it and not begin implementation until the city can get organized. So, that's, I would like to not lose the document in toll and say, we'll do it a little later, because we all know what a little later means, things get kicked down the line. So, I'll be prepared when we come in on the 17th, to continue working through the important parts of the ordinance, so that we can pass the ordinance in full.
I just wanna clarify, you understand that I'm saying I wanna pass the ordinance in full, I just was saying, let's have, let's break it into three modules, and then we can just deal with that one, if we have extra time, we'll run through the second one, instead of trying to sit down on one or two nights and do the entire ordinance, that's all I was saying.
And I'm open to any suggestions for how we organize our meetings, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll start out on the seventeenth and see if we're all on the same page, and we'll adjust as we need to.
Okay. Seventeenth. All right, let's go to the next one. Number six, Blue Run Park restroom. Who put that on the agenda?
Some reason, I think Mandy did, because we got the new MOU. She sent out a new MOU with, with the county, where they're recommending, basically the rec, most of the MOU reads the same as the original one, but with the recommendation that we go with the lesser expend, lesser costing building.
That's right. Send all that back to y'all.
Right, but we have not been through the entire MOU yet, and at least myself, I have issues with many parts of the MOU. And when I researched everything, just the appropriate timers came in. I don't know how far y'all wanna go. I didn't know who put this on here, so. But when I look at the Blue Run Park documents, there's basically five documents. We had, we've asked Andrew's firm in two thousand sixteen. We asked another auditing firm in two thousand seventeen to review compliance of us, the county, and everybody amongst these five documents. And it all starts with a driving document of, of the grant contract. And then that leads to another agreement, which leads to another agreement, which leads to an interlocal agreement. There's five in total. When I go through the, the records of what Andrew and his firm did, and what his auditing firm did, there's many areas in there where different entities are not compliant. My first question is, from that timeframe, has all these findings been fixed, and is everybody in compliance? I can tell you the answer is no, because I know that this board's not set up. I know annually the county doesn't come to us and present their financials from KP Hall. So my guess is, is that the, if not all, many of the findings are still at the same status when these were done, which is not compliance. Now, to zero right in on the bathroom, when the Blue Run Park was created in two thousand eight, and then the following agreements that I'm speaking about were drawn about, came to fruition, Dunellen was in a totally different financial situation. We had our own waterworks company then. The, and I was gonna mention, you know, we weren't in debt, millions of dollars for a green light, but that really doesn't have anything to do with, it has to do with our financials, but not with the agreements that we had with other people. But, long story short, Dunellen is on the hook for almost all the expenses for the restroom. We're gonna, when we had a water company, we would be paying water and sewer at cost. Now we're gonna be paying it at FGUA rates. The, I don't think it was understood, all the different components, and I'm gonna use one, the lift station. Dunellen is, will own that lift station, and Dunellen will have to pay for all maintenance, replacement, et cetera. Anybody drives around the city, they see what the, not FGUA, but who's the people that work on it?
US Water.
US Water. You see a US Water truck nonstop, working on lift stations all over the cities. It's gonna be a significant cost, and we don't have any idea what it is. The vandalism, you know, we keep bringing up, what's gonna keep this thing secure? We know what happens to our park restrooms now, and that's, this restroom over here in my mind, what's gonna prevent the one percent, ten percent of people that just have to do, do wrong, and then Dunellen taxpayers are gonna be left with that expense? So there's a whole lot of expense that Dunellen's gonna have forever, the way that these agreements are written, and Dunellen does not have the finances to do any of this. And so to me, we gotta go back to all the agreements that we have, somehow we gotta either rework them, get compliant or something, and then, 'cause those, that's the basis for everything, and then figure out a bathroom at some other time. But the entity that is, and this is, and I'm not looking for a war with the county, I don't even know anybody in the county, but we know that the money comes from KP Hall mostly, and that, the county gets the money, but Dunellen is being left with the expenses. I just don't see how it's unreasonable to expect a county to pick up the expenses from this park, when they're the ones that are receiving the revenues, and not leave it, you know, basically leave a green light bill for the taxpayers, but it will be forever, not just for the next ten years.
I agree with everything you said. All right, well, I think what we're gonna have to do here...
Back at the time, at this park was, first, there was a visualization, there was a plan, and the county formed a formal partner, formed a formal partnership, the city of Dunellen at the time, that was agreed to. It wasn't agreed to by us sitting here, but it was agreed to by Dunellen's city council. And we're obligated to follow that agreement. It's a legal document. I think our best bet is to work with our county commissioners, and to see if there's some way we can adjust our financial responsibility that was signed in that agreement. I mean, you're all talking like, "Oh, this was just a friendly little thing we did, and we shouldn't have got into it." No, it's, it's more like a formal agreement this city agreed to. Don't know what the timeline is, but we can communicate with our city, with our county commissioners, to get a timeline, and see what the city would have to start. If we get this restroom started, I mean, the, the planning has been done. That was a huge chunk of money that county has already invested in this restroom project. And just say, "We're gonna save the bill 'cause we can't afford it." No. How about we go to our county commissioner to say, "Hey, Dunellen has financial constraints. What can we do in a way of piecing out our part of financial obligation of next ten years," or whatever? I think we can work with them, instead of just putting our thumb up at our nose and saying, "Oh, sorry, we're bailing out because we're, we're having tough times." Let's act like we are gonna take all this responsibility that we signed into. And again, I'm not saying us, I'm saying the city of Dunellen made that agreement with the county. We can't just walk away from that. 'Cause you know what? There's gonna be other times, we're gonna be working with that county, especially with that park, and if, if we stay on track somehow with that agreement that was initially formed, and it's formal agreement, then we can keep working with them. So at least they'll know we're somehow trying to fulfill our financial obligation.
Well, I'll get ahold of county commissioners, see if they'll come to me. About that.
That's a great idea.
All right, that's what I'll do. All right.
So I just have one more thing.
Sure.
I found the email, and, and I guess why this is on here, because it looks like the county was looking for y'all to have some input on which of these two designs.
Yep.
That's, I'm sure, why this is on the agenda.
You're correct. But the MOU itself has never been signed. The original MOU has not been signed. The agreements, and I'm not thumbing my nose at anybody, okay? That's why I said, I'm not looking for a war with this. There's some fundamental problems with this. They, we, have no idea what this bathroom's gonna cost, okay? When you read the verbiage in the contract, it says Dunellen, okay, will pick up the excess cost. The county has committed this much money, all right? And we're guessing that it's gonna cost this, all right? And if it goes over, then Dunellen's on the hook for it. So I'm not gonna approve any project that we don't know what it's gonna cost. The other thing that I'm not gonna approve is, I'm not gonna approve any project that we do not understand what the costs are gonna be in the future. You just don't do business that way. The agreements, when you go through and you read all the agreements, many of them, we are on the hook for a lot of things. Like you, Jan, there needs to be discussion with the county commissioners about this whole thing, and that's what I'm looking for. Not looking for thumb in my nose. I really don't care who's put what effort into this, because I'm telling you, when I go through these five documents, I see a lot of, a lot of efforts that have not been completed. Basically, things that should've been done back in two thousand seventeen never got done. So this is another work that is in progress, that we have gotten dropped in our laps, all right? So now, we must, for everybody that's gonna pay this bill in the future, take a look at this thing, see the good, see the bad, and have these communications with the county. But to me, it makes no sense to drive forward, to heck with that damn torpedo, that's not an iceberg, okay? And to keep going forward and to leave, like we have been left, but really like in other things, it's just not right that we leave something that's got a lot of cost to, to the future taxpayers. That just doesn't make sense to me.
Unless, like, they're responding, I think, yes, let's go to the county, let's go to their director of parks and recreation, Jim Coolyard, sit down with our, with Kathy Bryant, and see if we can take care of all those matters that should've been taken care of, and then go on from there.
Right, right. Now, choose the right person, and I see Carl's...
One of those emails was, was just Jim Coolyard asking you, "Do you wanna go to the low-budget restroom design plan or the high?" That was the question they asked, and I think there's the obvious answer, right? Go low-ball. Then sit down with him and, and start from step one. There's no doubt about it, Tim, you have done your homework to a T, or things I was not aware of, so let's communicate with the Dunellen Parks and Recreation, see if we can iron out some things here, and then...
Right, but...
Then decide how and if we can move forward, and when.
But does everybody understand that what, what I see in front of me is, they're asking for us this new MOU, which has the different lower-cost bathroom in it, but they're looking for approval for that new lower-cost bathroom by signing off on this brand-new U MOU, okay, that has all these other terms in it that are problematic for the city? So, so we can't answer the bathroom question without all of that kinda stuff, without conversation.
I would definitely agree with everything you said, and I looked back at those agreements also from the very beginning. So if you are gonna be meeting with the county, one of the main questions I had, in addition to all of the things that aren't being, that the loop was never closed on, was this advisory board. Who is this advisory board made up of? And who from Dunellen is represented on this advisory board?
My knowledge, no one.
I understand that, and that's what, what, I, I agree that we, it's hard to talk about the cost of a bathroom going forward forever and ever for the taxpayers, when, you know, we know that the bathroom will be used by our residents, but also by all of the visitors. So before we take on another unending expense, like this, all of the unmet things in the previous agreements, including the advisory board, would be helpful.
Okay. Well, I will try to get ahold of Jim. He's out until next week, 'cause I've emailed him a couple times about a couple things. And he is, I think, due back after the Fourth of July. So I'll try to get ahold of him.
Thanks for taking that on.
All right. We ready to go to the next? Yes, sir.
Counsel, just very quickly, I wanna address the MOU. I know there was a draft that came out in April, and there are a number of issues that would need to be worked out. I have not received any revised versions or any instruction to proceed with reviewing that MOU, so I'm not quite sure of the status at this point.
Okay.
But as of right now, there's nothing going on with it, and there is the understanding, and he's very aware, that it would need to be rewritten substantially.
Well, like I said, when Jim comes back, I will ask him, you know, where, where are they on this, and where should we be on this? Because, like, I had a feeling we hadn't done anything with it, and what I remember you saying, just what you said now, is that it's got some big problems, the way it was written. So anyway, let's try to get up out together and have a little discussion about that.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. The next item is mooring at Blue Run Park, and what this has to do, and I may even ask Ron Gray to step forward, but what we're trying to do, if anyone has noticed, Ron and the police department have made a monumental effort. Not only did we have a swimming problem and a congestion problem at the ramp, we have a very large problem with boats pulling up to the bridge, throw in an anchor, and just sit there all day long. And I'm gonna talk about this, and Ron, I want you to step in. But what we're trying to work with on the mooring, and that just means boats are parking up here in the river, we cannot prevent a boat from parking in the river, okay? That's number one, because it's an abusable river in the state of Florida, and that's controlled by the state. But we have learned that if there's an exit or ramp into the river, my understanding is they cannot park a boat within a hundred and fifty feet of that ramp. And the good news for us is, the river right there is a hundred and forty feet across. So basically, they cannot park in front of that ramp. Now, like I say, Ron and the police got down there, what, about a week ago or so, and really went after this. They've taken down the steps out of the trees that have been there since I've lived in this town back in the nineteen-sixties, okay? They go up, they go down, they go up and go down, anywhere they're down. They put up metal signs, telling people you can't climb the trees, and that, over the weekend, made a huge difference to me and the number of people that were swimming there and just kinda hanging out around. Ron, you wanna take it from there?
Yeah, what we did is, from the complaints that we had, we partnered with FWC, the sheriff's department, and also DEP. There is a statute in place that says you can't maneuver more within a hundred and fifty feet. So with all the partners, we just started enforcing it. Now, what we're currently doing right now is, we've been doing education, we've not cited anybody for it, because first time offense is a hundred dollars, second time is two hundred, and then second, a hundred. So what we've been doing is educating most people, and they're complying with it, and worked very well, and made a significant difference over the weekend. And we will continue those enforcement efforts over tomorrow with the Fourth of July. DEP did come in, assist us with taking down the steps at the swing. We did cut the rope down, installed, they installed the sign, because it's a protected preserve. They've asked us at that point, because it is state property, if there, if we catch people nailing or tying stuff back to the tree, it then becomes a criminal charge, a misdemeanor charge, which people could be arrested for. We found out today that they've, they've taken down the sign, and we're gonna have them put it back up again, and we'll, again, continue to reinforce that. So it becomes a safe environment for everybody. The hazard that we have are the number of people that are created on that southwest corner, parking the boats, and then starting now into, impeding into the access of going and traversing north and south on the river. And we've been very fortunate that we've not had an accident. So with that, with not allowing them to anchor more there, that's starting to clear it up, and we're getting hand-to-hand swimming and stuff.
Ron, okay.
I had that, we called Tim last, last week, I wonder if it was? But our PVC water line is connected to the bridge, run across that. We was out to, got a complaint that somebody attached a swing to it. They hooked it to the water line, going to the bridge, and it took it down.
They did. Ron and them took it down. Ron and them took it down.
We didn't manage to.
Or somebody took it down.
But we took it down. We can have a different issue here, not just the trees, but they snapped that water line off underneath that bridge.
Oh, yeah.
Like swinging on it.
I won't get any water. That's important.
But, I mean, it'll be a whole nother.
No, it's, again, I think Ron's approaching this correctly. It's going to be educating the people who've been down there months and years doing this, and having them educated that take, we're going to start enforcing this, we're going to be nice about it, not going to lock anybody up. If you keep doing it, then it's going to be a problem. And that's what we got to do. Like I said, the fact they took the sign down today, that really upset.
We're going to reinstall it, and we'll continue to reinforce it. I mean, just because they take it down doesn't mean that it's not going back up and they're going to enforce it. And again, with the partner agencies, that's working out exceptionally well. Because obviously, we can't be out there 24/7, 365. But we have a force multiplier with DEP, FWC, and with the Sheriff's Department.
Exactly.
With the combination of all of us out there working together, that makes a huge difference there.
Sure, sure. And I do appreciate all you're doing out there, because I saw you all weekend. Alright, let's hear that.
I'd like to just add to that a little bit. I don't know the way to get out to the public, but, and I tested the chief and Ron. The new rope was put up probably five hours after the old stuff was taken down. I just wanted to go out there, see how it was working out. There's a guy already got a new rope up. But, and part of what I said to them was, you know, part of me says, man, this is a bummer. We all did that, loved doing the trees and all that. I think what the folks that have been here a long time and like doing that, what they're not understanding is, is this is not 20 years ago. The traffic on the river is, I mean, it's leaps and bounds different. So, you know, I know the whole thing about the swimming hole got pretty emotional and all that, but the thing that I don't think people are understanding is, is the difference in the amount of boat traffic and the difference in the amount of congestion that's in that river, it's only a matter of time before somebody is getting chopped up. And that just can't happen.
No, no, it's clearly a safety issue. And again, I was one of the bad kids that jumped out of trees and jumped off bridges and everything else, so I know the feeling, but the river back in the 60s and 70s is nothing like it is today, for sure. Okay, next item is radar signs.
Chief, is there any, could we consider putting a game camera or two out there? People know what they are. And if they see that they're on candid camera, maybe they'll think twice before they wrap it out of the road or nail up some more boards.
Yes, we can put up cameras. We've also talked to some of the residents that live right in that area. They may start putting up cameras of their own, just to protect their properties and then giving us access to that. Building onto the education stuff, Chad and I, we already talked about putting up signs. Just got the final one I needed from Andrew today for fines for the swimming, so we can get those designed up. And it just comes down to buying the signs, paying for the signs, and getting that stuff up. We're ready to go. We're just going to, we'll start presenting stuff to you guys in what we need soon. But it's difficult to really enforce anything out there when nobody knows.
Right.
You know that.
So, once that stuff goes up, of course, we're in peak of the season, and we're trying to play catch-up now. But yes, game signs, or game cams would be great. Up under the bridge, we can see if somebody's damaging, putting something up under there. And especially over where it just got marked, this is a protective preserve. They step over there, we'll start putting them out on your websites and getting identified and arrested and put them on mischief charges.
Good, I appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you're doing, for sure. Okay, item number eight, radar speed signs. This is something I brought up a long time ago. Can you remember what it was? But I just wanted to bring it up to say, is this something we want to stop, not talk about, throwing trash, or want to bring it back up? I've got more information about the cost of these and all that information. If we're interested in going forward, if we're not, then that's not it.
I thought that the last time we touched on this, you or somebody else brought up something about a reason why we were not going to be looking at these anymore.
Oh, I didn't remember that. Okay. The problem I see with it right now is 44 and 41, they're going to do some major renovations to those roads. And of course, we have to have these approved by Department of Transportation if they're on highway. The question was, I don't remember us just saying we're not going to do this, but if that's the answer, that's fine, I'll just, I'll take it. I just want to know what we need to do with this, if anything. Go ahead. Your thoughts. You weren't chief when this came up last time.
At the moment, I would just ask that you kind of just, you know, set it aside. Because it obviously would be an added cost to the city to put those up. And ask that you give the police department a chance. We've got the new officers coming. And seeing the difference in how enforcement will be done in the city going forward.
That is totally fine with me. I just, I put it on here just to remind myself, we're going to do something with this or not, so.
I think it's a difference.
Alright, good deal. Alright, so we're going to just scrap this for now.
For now, but it could grow again.
Well, I probably didn't make myself a note for six months. In fact, the two companies that I talked to, they are rassling me to death about, they don't matter to me, you be mad at me, whatever. And I'll just tell them, look, we've taken it for six months, and please give me a call back any minute. No, they will, okay.
Paulie, as you said, Paulie. The city down in Miami, where I'm, I'm Chris, when the new mayor got elected, he was, they had their own police department. He was anti-speedy. He said, if they're five miles over, you give them a ticket. They pulled the mayor over one night, gave him a ticket. But you want to know something? It works, because while that mayor was in office, the word around Dade County was, you do not speed in Pinecrest. And it works. And as soon as that mayor got out, the other one said, do it or don't do it. And I come home at night, people passed me 50, 60 miles an hour. So, you know, just a thought, it does work. People, when you, when they get it, they will pay attention, so.
Oh, absolutely. I know a little town in Georgia, I've got the ticket, and I've flown down to there every time I go back there. Okay, City Hall Boat Rant.
Oh, hold on a second. This is a workshop, right?
Yep.
I'd like to bring up a topic that was chewed around a little bit by the previous council. And I can see where this could be of benefit to the city in two ways. It involves Chestnut Street, keeping commercial trucks off that street, have a sign up there like we see in towns all over, no commercial vehicles, and have them detour down Tow Road. And again, those heavy trucks, we're talking about trucks hauling mega tons of lime rock, the timber, pine timber hauling trucks. They're just all day long back and forth, and they got to be tearing that street up. People's cars have been hit. We have a school zone there, and so on and so. We have pedestrians going or crossing back and forth. Those trucks don't need to be coming up and down that road all day long.
Okay. Let's put that on agenda in the future, and we will definitely bring that up.
Thank you.
City Hall Boat Rant, commercial use, launch fees. I have something to say about that, if somebody, unless somebody.
You'll just catch putting that on the agenda, on the August agenda?
Yeah, August, be fine. I have been in contact with FWC about our boat rant down here and the cost of repairing it, because it's going to need to be repaired. And I've been going back and forth with a nice lady there, and had gotten a statement that they will take the boat rant back if we want to give it to them. Now, there was, and I haven't talked to her, they will not address the metal dock and bridge or whatever we have down there, and that's hers. There was a couple of things they won't do, and I have, she and I have passed voicemail back and forth. If this is something we want to keep pursuing, then I'll keep pursuing. If it's not, then, and that's another matter. But the other thing, I think, this commercial use that got me, is I have noticed that not only do the KP Hole Shuttle Service pick up kayakers and tubers at Blue Run Park, they pick them up at the boat rant, okay? And I don't really understand that, except I know they do. I've seen their buses down there, and it's not tubers, it's kayakers. The question that brings this up to me is, we do not charge them to pick up there. And I guess the question is, should we? That's a commercial issue.
That was discussed a long time ago when we started talking about fees. So I'm just saying that that has been on the table before.
Okay. Do you remember what happened with it?
Everything just got put on hold.
Well, that's what I figured. But no, the question I got is, I have noticed, now, when I talk about the boat rant, my understanding is they'll take the ramp back. But everything else, though, they don't want the DRA, they don't want the metal bridge, they don't want any other problems that go with this. They will just take the ramp, repair it, get it to where you don't get stuck when you back the boat down there like I did, and those kind of things. They will take care of the ramp, and after that, it's ours.
And we do have that Board of Over-approval Grant that's still in progress. It got rated for, it was a qualitative rating, so there's still more ratings to go. We should hear something, I believe, this month. And that's a complete overhaul redesign from the dock to the, out to the street out front.
Right, she had also told me that that was out there, and she knew we had applied for it. So that's really, I hadn't been in a hurry to get back with her for really understanding where we stand on all of this.
And that's only a planning grant.
Right.
And then, once this area is designed, then we apply for a construction grant.
Right, and she said we can clearly get that as well, so, anyway.
And it's a proportion too. Because that grant is, it only applies to motorized vessels. So we had to estimate our kayak use versus the motorized vessels. So we're, we've been hooked for, right now, 5% of the grants.
Okay.
So the grants are only apply if we keep it?
Right.
If we, okay.
Yeah, if we don't keep the ramp, then the grant to fix the ramp, we would lose. Now, there are grants to help do the whole thing.
No, we could still, it's our understanding, we wouldn't be able to fix the ramp.
Right.
But it doesn't just cover the ramp.
No, no, I get that, that's what I was going to say. It wouldn't fix the ramp, but it could fix the circle and all that.
And the kayak lane that is in the design.
One more point of clarification, if I could, before you go on. Are you saying that the county park is using now both Blue Run and the dock here? So essentially, like they're.
Oh, they use another place in town too, that's owned by the people who run that.
Maximizing the money they can make by using all of Dunellen's resources, and not getting anything?
Yeah, they pick up tubes and some kayaks at Blue Run Park. They pick up kayaks in the boat rant. They apparently have purchased a piece of property near city beach, and they pick up there as well. And I don't know if that's tubes or kayaks. I know you may know, I know you don't. That's why I was saying it's both there, because it's right where the Whittaker's in the ring.
And is that all county, or is that county collaborating with?
No, this is just a guy that runs the shuttle service.
It's just the vendor.
He's the vendor.
He's the vendor contracted by the county.
Right. He has a contract with Cannon Pickett Blue Run Park, that's it. And he has expanded it somewhat to where he picks up in our boat rant, and he also picks up on his property, the Whittaker's. So he's picking up at all three. And the question I had is, now that we know that, should we charge a fee for him to do it?
It depends if we're going to keep it or not.
Right. Okay, so, anyway, just trying to keep everybody in the loop on what's going on.
Helpful.
Alright.
One more, Ron. Does this grant prohibit us from charging for the rant?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so if we go with FWC, we cannot, I didn't know if they grant.
Well, if we go with FWC, there may not be a stipulation. You know, maybe it can be worked out that there is no stipulation. They're only taking the ramp, they're not taking the dock or anything else that we may be able to charge a fee for. And my opinion is, you charge everybody. You don't just charge the single private user. You know, we charge commercial businesses for parking here. So I think that you can determine a fair fee, you know, not to gouge them in any way, something fair. And I think that the state park, you know, they said there'd be no cost to the city for all of this. And they were basing it on a certain level of fees that we would be charging. And if we don't charge commercial, I don't think we'll meet that threshold. But they need to make money. They're not just going to do something for free. But, and for them to do it at no cost to the city, they are making money. And a commercial fee would contribute to that.
Right. Well, I will discuss that when I get, girl from FWC on the phone. I'll ask her, you know, if we start charging a fee, is that going to inhibit us from getting the grant or them taking the ramp or any of this stuff? Okay, ready to move on? I'm trying to get rid of this meeting. Alright, we have a special events ordinance. Where did this come from? I read it, it's quite interesting.
You all have brought it up at previous meetings.
Oh, okay.
About wanting to do something. When we had the meetings come up previously about who was going to be responsible for what during these special events with.
Sure. Yeah, it is, it's, you know, some of this, I'm getting old, I forget. You know, as soon as you start talking about it, like I said, I read this, now I don't remember something about this. Okay, alright.
We talked about doing an ordinance, to be more specific. And this is one from Edgewood that was provided as an example. I am one of them.
I'll tell you where I'm at. This is the one item that I never got to, so. Come on now, Tim. I tell you, drop this ball, everybody. I'm not whining, I'm not crying, but I'm telling you, for the last week, every single day, whether it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, my every waking hour has been on city stuff, okay? And a few folks in this room can attest, because I've been faster now. And not they faster me, but vice versa. I simply might not up into this. I say we put this off. Like September, maybe. Because again, I think the city probably needs a special ordinance like this. Between the budget and all we got going on, I don't see how we really bring this to it yet, so put it off.
Yeah, I did get time to look at this, and I also looked at these special permit events other cities, and the problem I saw is, those other cities would allow people who want a corporate retreat, for example, and they want to use our park.
Right.
They charge.
Oh, absolutely.
There's a charge that has to be cleaned up, and I didn't see anything here about mentioning about fees, so.
Are we comparing this to another?
Yeah, let's put this off till September, October. In fact, it might be better to put it in October, since we've got the budget, we've got to wrap up by the end of September. Let's put it in October. Because, I mean, I think the city does need something like this, so again, if somebody wants. wants to use Arnie Mills Park for a retreat or a party or something, we got somewhere to, so let's put that off. Okay.
How many times, that council?
October, all right. The opioid settlement, if y'all remember, had a gentleman speak, um, in this schedule that's attached, uh, is kind of a summary of where we were. We had kind of a brief discussion about this, but long and short of this, Marion County received about ten million dollars from this settlement, and that's ten days, and it's gonna be paid out over eighteen years. But the schedule that was attached, uh, shows that, uh, the city of Dunellon's gonna get forty-seven thousand dollars over eighteen years, and it's about two thousand roughly a year. Uh, but for that money, we have to develop a plan, a program, send in basically tax returns showing we got the money, and then how we spent the money, and that was properly spent, and design a program. And I think our conclusion was, which my conclusion was, uh, this is too much headache for about two thousand dollars a year. And I thought we reached the consensus of, list in the county will take this, they're already pretty sure they're gonna take, um, the town of Reddick is gonna get two hundred and seventy-four dollars, um, the town of McIntosh is gonna get three hundred and seventy-one dollars, and Bellevue gets twenty-five thousand, and we're getting forty-seven, and I believe all those towns are gonna give the money to county, let the county handle. Now, I think Ocala and, of course, the county, they're gonna handle their own thing. But unless y'all disagree, honestly, at first it sounded like, okay, it's some money, but when you start looking at all the strings that are attached to this money, and how we can and can't spend it, and we gotta develop a program for it, I just don't think it's worth our headache to deal with. And if y'all are fine with that, I think we vote to just give this to the county and let them deal with it.
I remember at the end of last conversation, these maybes of police say they wanted to weigh in.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, that's fine, you did.
That's right.
Yeah, so, at that moment, I had no clue what this was. Uh, that gentleman, when he was here, said he'd give me all the information, would speak to me, and I've heard nothing. So, their input, what is going along with this, if you adopt it, is but, the input they've given me, it's gonna be nothing.
Right.
Uh, so, my recommendation is you do not go with this, just 'cause I have no clue what it is.
Well, again...
This is worse than this.
I keep getting his information. I'm sorry, I didn't know that he hadn't reached out to you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you've been a little busy, but anyway.
I think we're past that, Michelle.
Uh, I just think, for this amount of money, over eighteen years, it's, it's not worth us dealing with it.
I don't know.
Okay, so if that's fine, we'll have it on a consent agenda, just to approve to give this money back to Marion County.
I have, um...
CBG grant requirement.
Huh?
This is worse than CBG grant.
No, it's crazy, it's, it's unbelievable.
I have, I have a suggestion.
Okay.
That we give the money back to them with strings attached. Those strings being, those strings being that our portion, you know, twenty-four hundred dollars a year, be given to the Boys and Girls Club, and they can do the opioid, um, education through the Boys and Girls Club.
I don't know where they take it in, so let's just...
Just take a letter to ask.
All right, I hear you. All right, now, uh, we have a modular office trailer. Chief, you know anything about that? At the waste treatment plant?
Chad knows.
I think Chad knows.
Oh, Chad knows, I'm sorry. That's where y'all's cars and stuff were parked for a while, I'm there as you.
Um, yeah, my understanding how it is, that was, when we transferred all this stuff over to them, that trailer was their property, but it was never transferred by title, and they wanna do stuff with it now, or get rid of it. So, I believe we just have to transfer that title to that property to them, and they can do whatever they want.
Right, if, if I can add on, um, a few months ago, we had all kinds of records and old, just junk in there, we had a bunch of police records in there.
That's right.
Yeah, Matt and, uh, his crew went out there, cleaned out the trailer, worked with the police, got everything out of there, so we have all of our stuff emptied out of it. Um, uh, speaking with Mandy about what this topic was, it's just like Chad said, we thought it went to them, they thought it went to them, paperwork didn't transfer, and even if we do own it, it's gonna cost us more to get rid of that thing and haul it off the property than to, uh, just transfer the title over. I don't know if we have to do a dollar-type thing, or, uh...
No, we own it. Um, I don't know that we would have to, I mean, we would have to do a resolution just to transfer ownership, yes, like a surplus. Yes, but we own it, we have title for it.
Yeah.
I've looked into it, I've spoken to John Morell. Um, it, for whatever reason, it was not on there.
Okay.
And all this time, I was under the impression that went with the sale of the utility.
It was not an asset.
Most people are right. All right, well, let's, let's do whatever, we gotta do, transfer that and put that on consent agenda, just to get rid of it, okay?
If it's a resolution, it has to go on the regular agenda.
Okay, well, keep me straight, let's don't do something stupid. Okay. All right, now, we do have a resolution on the disposal of some additional vehicles and trucks and stuff that we've got, the surplus, um, and there's a list of those, tax here, a couple of police...
These are five vehicle, no, I'm sorry, there's more.
Yeah, there's only five.
There's eight vehicles, seven of them will be surplus via weeks.
Uh-huh.
And one will be, um, traded with Duval Ford, and for a new vehicle for the police department.
Right, that's the Dodge truck.
Right. That is the first vehicle, the Ram fifteen-hundred classic truck.
Right.
Yes.
Got it. Okay. I'm good with that, y'all good with that? Let Weeks sell all this stuff, except the one we're gonna trade in for a new truck? Uh, just a minute, okay?
Okay, ask Mandy to put language in here, because the bucket truck may or may not go to Weeks. Um, we were working, uh, that as a trade-in, uh, to obtain a new dump truck, and that's in motion right now, it's just in process.
So, just take it off.
Well, what I asked Mandy, is she could put some, so we don't have to keep doing resolution after resolution, if she would put some language in there, that kind of leaves this one open-ended, and the language that she put in there was just above the signature of blocks, where it says number one. And at the very end of that paragraph, it says, "Or other approved licensed dealer."
Okay.
So, what that allows us to do is, the bucket truck is on this list, uh, we have another approved licensed dealer, we can get rid of the bucket truck through them with trade, and not have to come back for a separate resolution.
Got it, okay. That sounds good, to me.
So, that would have to go on the regular agenda.
All right. All right, number fourteen. Agreement for the Vertex Consulting, this has to do with the police department.
Ron, you are...
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm just sorry.
Vertex Consulting, um, obviously, what this is, what we're asking for, is they, we have been, the police department is currently challenged with IT support, okay? Um, our current contract has expired, and we've looked for one that meets the credentials that would be required for law enforcement, and they are the closest with the experienced and qualified folks. So, that's what we have before you tonight, um, for that. It's approximately thirty-six thousand dollars a year, um, three thousand ninety dollars, um, a month. And what that provides us is seventeen hours that they have to come out and work, but it gives us something we've never had before. It gives us IT support, three and sixty-five days a year, twenty-four seven.
And this really helps you guys in cars as well, I mean, it's not just...
This, this covers all...
It covers everything, 'cause it's not just sitting in the office. I mean, your guys are out, and you got, you guys are out, and need something, and you're sitting there at your computer in your truck, you can get it done.
At three o'clock in the morning, we have somebody you can call, and either they can either, um, walk us through it, remote into it, or come, come there and fix it.
Right, okay.
Jan has a hand in that.
I was asked if any, uh, budget funds are available to cover this for the remainder of the year. There is approximately eleven thousand dollars of the support that was budgeted, the twenty thousand that was budgeted for, um, computer support, that's available. So, if this is three thousand a month, we need nine thousand dollars to cover it within the year, so it should work out.
All right.
And if I remember right, there was no, like, one-time upfront charge or anything?
No, no.
Gotcha. Okay, the only other, well, go ahead with the presentation.
No, no, that's it, um, I'm open for questions.
Um, what we say was gonna be three thousand or something, I don't know, right?
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
Three thousand ninety. We will be adding this to the budget for next year at about thirty-six thousand dollars.
Okay, but that will be in place of...
Of the support that was already...
What was the name of the one we're using now?
Beacon.
Beacon, right.
And I don't have the budget in front of me, so if PD rebudgeted Beacon for next year to about twenty thousand, means I'm gonna, I don't know for sure.
We were about twenty-five thousand on Beacon, is what we were looking for.
And that's what I was, that's what I was gonna say, so why that number, the thirty-some thousand, thousand, a whole lot? We already had twenty-twenty-five in the budget, so it's not really a brand-new cost like that.
So, maybe, maybe ten thousand dollar increase.
Right.
Give or take.
Right, and for a real product.
Right. Correct, correct.
You know, and y'all need this, I, 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 it, I just go nuts when I hear that y'all never had anything like this. This, this doesn't make sense.
It helps us build that foundation.
Exactly.
And, and that's what we're looking for, and it just reinforces what we're on. And, and Beacon, in consultation with Beacon, Beacon has said, listen, you know, we've been there for you guys, and they have, um, but they're at the point now where there's, their area of specialization is that of corrections and not criminal justice. So, they have even asked us, we're not gonna leave you hanging, but if you could find another vendor. So, we've been doing that for a while, and was able to vet Vertex.
And to add on, if I remember right, we have to have this to operate a police department.
Correct.
Right, it's mandated by the state.
Yes.
Yeah, I got that, wow, okay. Well, don't, don't leave, we got something else for you. I think, yeah, there's more. Do we need to work on that one? You agreed to send it? Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm all, I mean, can we do that on consent, or do we have to vote on that?
We, we can, we just, there are a few edits to the, to the agreement itself, that Vertex would just have to add to the agreement before it could come back to you.
All right, well, let's move this as quick as we can, 'cause I, I wanna make sure that you guys get this stuff, with all these policemen hired. Yes, ma'am.
Maybe the motion could be that you approve it, and, and you authorize the mayor to sign the agreement when it comes in.
Right, that motion won't be made till next Wednesday, but, um...
Oh, okay.
It would have to go on the regular agenda, correct?
Right. That's what I wanna make sure, is if we do, if we have to get on the regular agenda, we get it on the regular agenda.
Right, yeah, it, it can go on consent, I think what, um...
Jan?
What you're all referring to, there, there are some, uh, there were some edits that just need to be added to have the contract comply with state law, since it's a municipal, uh, contract.
Right.
And, and I don't think that these are gonna be, um, provisions, the ones that I added that are objectionable by the vendor. So, uh, it's just an indemnification parity clause as well, and a limitation, so it's making clear that, you know, we're not, um, going outside the state statute, and then the, um, and then just the, uh, uh, public records language that's mandated.
Sure.
So, you know, with those additions, what, as long as the vendor approves those, those could, those could go on consent.
Yeah, I know those requests have been made, and he was looking to try and get them to me by the end of today, I'll update that.
We have plenty of time, Jan's over here telling me, I keep forgetting we have a whole week.
We'll say you don't have a whole week.
Could, um...
Well, I mean, it's over a week before the, uh, before the regular meetings.
I know.
I'm still used to the new schedule.
So, I think we have plenty of time.
Okay, well, have you only had like five, let's, let's get it.
Yeah, I think we have plenty.
We have the original Vertex proposal, can we see what the changes are, so we're informed before we come in Wednesday?
The changes on the agreement?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have the red line version right here.
Cool, all right, cool, yeah, if you can get that to us. All right, Ron, uh, that was number fourteen, Vertex.
They're quick.
Keep going. Now, we have an, who's this?
Yeah, if you just send them to us, Michelle.
Yeah.
Enterprise?
Exxon.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
And what we brought before you guys again tonight, obviously, we have some obvious, we talked about our IT issues, uh, and some of the things that go into the IT issues become also what the officers carry with them, they become officer safety. First thing being that of body worn cameras, okay? Obviously, all that data's collected, it has to go somewhere, and that's kind of been bogging down now. Um, our cameras are old and antiquated, um, and again, the process and the technology used to collect that is old and needs immediate replacement. So, what we did was, when we were looking, uh, the TASER, we had, we had come before this council, before, talked about our, our needs for TASERS for less lethal force, um, that the officers carry with them, for, um, you know, having a less lethal option is completely appropriate, um, and much needed for officer safety. So, with that, um, Exxon provides both of those services. So, we were originally looking at that, but bundling the services together makes it far cheaper and more affordable, and with that allows us to take a burden off of our IT, because now we can move that, that video footage to the cloud. And by doing that, hopefully, we're, we're looking at lessening that footprint on our IT within the police department, and that will significantly help us. So, that's what we have, um, for you guys tonight, 'cause that is to be able to get this equipment for those five officers that, that are going out in that. Without this, um, when we take back patrol, they would not have these tools to do that.
Right.
Counsel, if I could just make one comment?
Sure.
Because this acts like a lease purchase agreement, it will be recorded as debt on our books. That's an accounting rule that we can't, you know, get around.
Right.
The auditors will impute the interest rate.
It is a capital item.
It is, that's why...
Capital item, man, at least, I'm familiar with those.
That's why we can use the one cent sales tax money.
Okay, good.
And that will have to be reserved, like I've done for the Stormwater Asset Grant. Every year, I'm carrying a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for that. That, the same thing would be for this, especially if the sales tax doesn't get renewed, and I do have a correction to make, and I made, I've misstated, the sales tax does end at the end of twenty-twenty-four. I've corrected our budget document to reflect that. Um, so, we just, and we've got the money in the reserve, so this can be, can work.
Okay, let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
I forgot, this, this is only five officers.
Correct.
Now, I know this year, I should say next twelve months, that'll be fine, but what are we, I mean, we, can we add to this if we get back to seven or eight officers?
Absolutely, absolutely, we're just being an end of to that.
Okay.
And, you know, we just wanted to, um, be fiscally responsible and start off with the five, and go from there.
Sure, sure, I got it. Now, I only have one other question, what about you two?
Uh, we will not have that, the officers will have it.
Okay.
And then, as the program grows, and we start seeing some of those other savings, then we will add those for both the chief and myself.
Right, okay. Okay, I just want y'all safe.
Oh, we'll be safe.
Okay.
If we're acting in a patrol capacity, then, um, we would have, we would be using them.
Okay, all right. All right, everybody good with that? Now, this isn't in the budget, right? Yet, or did you put this in? This is...
It's not in the budget yet, I, this is, this is for another revision.
Right, okay.
For the next version.
Right, I got you.
But this is not in either budget, this is not in?
Correct.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, right, or is it in this budget, hence, well, you're saying we need an amendment for this here.
Yes, because you're using one cent sales tax money.
Right.
And since you're bringing that in to pay for the first installment, that's why a budget amendment is definitely needed at least for this.
How do we look with our one cent sales tax expenditures so far?
Uh, we're, I, I can produce a schedule for you, we haven't purchased everything that was budgeted this year because of the turnover in personnel, so we, I anticipate, and don't hold me to this, but by the end of next year, we'll have remaining around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe, in that reserve, that's accounting for everything.
Okay.
So, and then if we get it re-upped, then that's just more money we continue to get for another four years, so hopefully.
So we got the money to do it?
We do.
Do we need to take any action tonight to make sure it gets on the agenda, or does it just automatically transfer them? Because we'll be voting on it next Wednesday.
Right, but now, you're gonna need these like now.
Correct, correct.
And what, what Jan just said is we gotta amend the last year's budget, twenty-two, twenty-three.
That, no, yes.
To, to put it on it, we got the money, but we gotta.
I said it.
And, and.
And then take care of the, us through the end of the year, but then this goes into budget.
Right, and if I can get a resolution done between now and then, I'll present it, otherwise I'll present it at the, at the next meeting.
Okay.
You don't have to amend your budget till, till November anyway.
Right.
So we've got plenty of time to do that as long as you all are aware of it.
Alright, so wait a minute, so we can vote to purchase this?
Yes.
And then resolution follow up?
Yes.
Okay, or amendment follow up later?
Yes.
Okay, got it, okay.
So consent.
So consent?
Got it, thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Counsel.
Appreciate it. Alright, Department head reports.
So I don't really have very much for you. I'm gonna remind you all that you have a special CRA meeting prior to the regular council meeting on the twelfth at five o'clock. I do need to narrow down a date, although I don't wanna take your spotlight away from your.
Thank you.
From your council comments, so I do have my dates, so I.
Excellent, thank you.
We will get to that Florida Blue Ways later, but other than that, I don't have anything, so Jan, do you have anything?
I have nothing, yes.
Michelle, do you wanna put that on the agenda, like, for like, the council just pick a date?
No, I, I have it in your council comments for you to talk about.
Oh.
This evening, ma'am, so I'm, I'm gonna let you shine.
I misunderstood you.
Chad?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have anything, sir?
Oh, I do. Um, alright, we had the ongoing problem down at Rock Springs there, Cherokee Circle, the road's flooding, stuff we spent the better part of last Saturday morning pumping that out.
Where's it?
Cherokee Circle?
The bottom springs.
The bottom.
Oh, I was gonna say, I used to live there.
Alright. Keeps flooding out, we spent last Saturday, phones out there, pumping it back in, it was up in the driveway. We contacted TNT Sewer, and they give us a quote of, they wanna run a camera through it, and then they also have the auger, the joint to run to to clean it out, we wanna run a camera down through to make sure the problem is there, isn't a problem made by somebody.
A collapsed pipe or something? Or did it just root?
Or a fence post.
There you go.
Because they were out there last May for the same problem, and, and they ran a snake down there, and it looks like, because I live right there, and it, and it looks like somebody put a fence post in and dug right through the drain, so. Plus the other thing they did was the overflow, to make the drain work better, they knocked the sides out for the overflow, because you know the water's supposed to rise up and go in.
Right.
So now all the junk drains in there too. And I went out there the next morning, and I went to see what it looked like, and there was a lady who had her car up there, and she's standing there, and she's up to the water over her knees, and she couldn't back the car out, doing, I'm gonna have water drained down.
Right, and they've been dealing with this for about three years now.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, we, we got a plan in place, we're proactively gonna get this thing fixed.
Good.
We wanna make sure if it's, was a problem created, but somebody else to build it or not, we just wanna make sure it's taken care of.
Right, yeah, that's right.
I gave you guys all that paper for Johnson's Control for alarm systems.
Right.
For a new alarm system there, for Public Works Building, there's two different ones there, they give us a, a alarm system, they also give us the fire alarm system, two separate papers there.
Right.
Yes, my question, they give us a, a payment method or to pay for outright one installment, that was broke down in there what it is, and I was also wondering on fire system, do we need the fire system, or we just need alarm system? We have the, the records there and also the maps, so that's what the fire system.
Sure.
Came up.
Y'all have a sprinkler system out there?
No.
Wow, got it.
And Counsel, if, if we do purchase this, it qualifies for, as a capital purchase, and one cent sales tax funds can be used for this, since it's Public Works Building.
Right. Do we already have, don't we have a, an alarm system there? Is that building? And is it, what I'm getting to, is it in the budget normally, or is this a new system? I mean, I know it's a new system, but.
This is a new system, we had an alarm system that's been disconnected years ago, it really wasn't working through ADT, so that's part of the whole water meter, electric meter, just find out what we're paying bills for, but we really aren't using that service, this service, this past security service is one of those, so we do have some alarm system on the building, but not what, not where we need to be.
No, no, I got it, my question was, aren't we paying for something?
Not anymore, not anymore.
Okay, we were.
Correct.
Now we're not.
Correct.
We're paying for what we didn't have, I guess you'd say.
Right, okay.
So Chad, what are you, just so I don't assume wrong, what are you looking for us to do with this?
Not sure if we wanna go ahead with that, we wanna get that installed now, you want me to roll it over till next year's budget?
Gotcha.
Or, because we've budgeted if the issue came up.
Okay.
And do you wanna buy the systems outright and pay a lower monthly fee, or do you wanna pay just a higher monthly fee and not, you know, incur a capital expense?
And it's a contract, once you do the monthly payment, once it's paid off, then you just drop to what the service is.
Right, okay. If we have the capital funds, I'd rather just, and what you explained earlier, I think we got it.
We do.
Okay, that's my opinion, y'all.
I don't have an opinion, because I don't, I gotta read through this.
And just let us know if you want it this year or next year, but again, it would be a budget amendment for this, since it's sales tax.
Right, okay, got it.
So is this gonna be brought up at the next Wednesday's meeting, or are we looking at?
We can put it on the regular agenda, and then you can discuss it before you vote on it, if you wanna discuss it again.
Okay, good deal, alright.
Alright, next is, we had the company come back out and quote us on our two garage doors, we did a budget last year for twenty thousand, we did three of the garage doors, and they just come back out and give us the estimate for the remainder to seal up, to start sealing up the building, right?
Right.
It's gonna be about sixty, one hundred and forty dollars for the two new doors, plus three remotes for the trucks.
Right.
Which we budgeted last year was twenty thousand, we spent ten on the first three, so it still keeps us under.
So you still, you still got it in the budget?
Yeah, we still, we're under budget still.
I would do it.
Stealing up the building.
You've got a couple more doors for next year.
Building secure.
You've got a couple more doors meant for next year, I believe.
That was, our first price coming in was, the three doors was gonna be a lot more, but we got them for.
For less.
Ten, so since we're still on the budget, we didn't know what budget, we can do them this year, then we'll raise the price off next year.
I would, I would rather put them in this year, because like I say, you've got the money in this budget to go ahead and do this and not carry this to next year.
So I, I should remove it from next year's budget?
Well, hang on, hang on, hang on. I'd like to get with you, Chad, just to get some more details.
Okay.
And understand the money flow and all that.
Okay, and then just let me know, you know, Wednesday.
Yes, ma'am.
Not, not Monday.
You want to talk tomorrow? Just giving you a hard time, dude.
We also.
So are we putting that on the regular agenda, sorry, trying to keep it straight? Regular agenda?
That's fine, yeah, we're gonna discuss it, we have a little regular agenda. Oh mercy, this is getting long. Alright, hurry up.
Alright, we also, we wanna get all the fire inspections done on all public buildings.
Okay, yeah, I saw that.
Right.
Did you just say that we were getting fire inspections done on all of our public buildings?
We have done them already.
They're done.
They're done.
Done?
Right, yeah.
We got them done, they're really good, we just have emergency lights, we can replace some batteries in, and those will all be compliant, except Alphatell, we'll have to get their fire suppression system.
We can hire this guy to do a short term rental fire inspection.
We all put the.
Get them done next week, we don't have to wait four months, okay.
You know.
Denver, they've been done, we just have to replace some batteries and some exit lights.
Okay.
Give them a call for reinspection, and all buildings should be compliant.
Sounds great, man.
Part of what I wanna add is, is that squashes the whole, we can't, fire inspections are not available type thing. If it's, if it is requested in the proper way, it was two days, next day later, they were out there and made them happen.
Tell you them, they submitted the paperwork you called and one of them will be doing.
And the other good news that these couple of us were worried about is the findings that we were gonna incur and then the cost with that.
Right.
Like Chad said, we ended up with only minimal findings.
That's great.
So.
Two of the buildings, two of Public Works and the Art Center had no violations at all, they've been passed completely.
Man, that's great, that old building scares me.
Two exit lights that have been batteries in.
I don't wanna belabor it, but how did the Art Council pass without a back door?
There is a back door.
There's a back door, it's just locked.
Well, I made one home call, a creep who.
And we got locked, the door, well, that's resolved.
The key, the key was there, they just didn't know about it, so I gave her the key, and now she might not.
That's a great solution, right.
So the, the single, the, the Art Center is.
Yes, sir, right, yes.
And Counsel, I'm gonna submit this to our insurer.
Chad has got a question on that, I know that we brought it up in another workshop, the lease, we haven't done anything with the lease for that yet.
No, that's still coming up.
That is coming up, right.
We may be able to get reimbursed fifty percent of the entire cost.
Of?
Of these inspections through our insurer, because it's a safety thing that we're going through.
Great.
They have a grant program, so we'll see if we can get, get reimbursed a bit for this.
You guys look at the leasing stuff, I did contact two companies, and they come out and give us quotes on what it would cost to pressure wash and paint a building and all that stuff, so I have both of them quotes from two different companies, if it's something you look at when you do any more with a leasing project.
Okay, Chad, would you forward those to me?
Yep.
Forward those to all of us, because I'm, I mean, I'm, I think we're gonna have to pressure wash a lot of our buildings.
Pressure washing and painting whole building.
Exactly, okay.
I don't give a better by Public Works, but EVs and charging stations are in.
Right, I notice there's two.
There's two charging spots.
So there's four, actually four places to charge.
Charging spots, two stations, they're never been painted, the lines are all done.
Right.
It's gonna be about six to eight weeks before they're functional, waiting on transformers to come in, once transformers come in, I'll set them to stations with the other one.
Good deal.
We got off of Marion County blacklist, I guess, we moved the welcome sign out there on Forty West.
I saw that.
Hour or hours in March, we put it up, so.
I saw it, it was moving the other day when I went to church, and I was like, wow!
Yeah, we called them, they come out, did a check on it, said everything's good, they took us off of this, and we have no, no red flag.
There you go.
Mary is already able to get the permits, anything we want through Marion County. Aside that, we have a new guy starting Public Works Monday, so.
Okay. Any other Department head?
I'm just ribbing his chat. I am revising permit fees, which first includes an analysis of the revenue expense accounts, just trying to make sure everything's going where it should be, working with Marion County on the zoning map issues. Some, you know, just a couple reasons in the past that were never incorporated, I mean, do not show up on here in the county at all. So along with that, they let me know that if I get a certain map layer, and this is way beyond my comprehension of GIS, we'll get an automatic interface with that, so then you do, okay, all maps, it automatically.
Automatically does that, sure.
It reads right off of ours, onto theirs. I have FEMA floating administrator training at the end of July, it's gonna cost a lot of work for six hours or so, and I am gonna try to finalize that FEMA audit doc, uh, audit this week, I just gotta get them all the violation notices we sent to people, so for the hacker, if you're in a flood zone, get your work permitted, or we get in trouble.
Right.
And that's pretty much all I have, except for we are talking insurance programs on the budget, it just kinda sparked a note, because I know a lot of owners, residential, not so much commercial, but are required to show proof of the roof replacement when their roof was last done, or the insurance companies, if you have to do something, then you have to replace it or we drop you, that's what, that's what ultimate people are doing. I don't know when this was last done, I would have to dig through paper files, you know, those logs to find that, just consideration.
Right.
On the FEMA, on the FEMA violations, we did send out all, we sent out violations to everyone that was on the FEMA violation stuff, so they have all that taken care of.
Good, good, hi, chief.
So today we had our first four new officers start in the police department. We've come a long way. Long way, a long way. Wednesday, we have a fifth interview with somebody that we're unlikely to all go with, so we'll have five new officers starting really quick, that birthday, the training was today. If you look at a normal sixteen week training schedule, what, because that's based on a shift schedule, that's thirty-five days of training, we're gonna be Monday through Friday, eight to five, and we'll have thirty days, so short couple days, but those that may need the extra assistance, because we're hiring some that have experience, they'll still be able to get a stay in training a few more days if need be, but we hopefully won't have any problem taking over the road back with our ninety day window. Hired our admin assistant already, he's at work, his very first day at work, he applied for a grant for us, so he is working diligently and, and just with the more and more things we find over there, unfortunately, he's getting tasked, we're gonna have to fix them, so he's getting a lot of work in, along with, he's interested in possibly becoming an old town officer with us, or at least becoming a reserve with us. Matt kind of solves some of our problems, we were delivering evidence to Jacksonville, needing a sworn officer escort, he's a sworn officer, he can do it himself, and they're not the old town connected to it. There's gonna be a new police department sign come up, put out there, bill goes down, Chad and Matt has already taken it down, there were, you know, some screws loose in it, it was making it a little, little wobbly there, from the lawnmower hitting it, well, lawnmower didn't hit it. So that's down already, so if you went by, there is no sign out front, but it still looks at the wall of who we are, the new sign should be coming out soon, and it's gonna match with the entry exit signs here, starting to tie up the city together. And basically, thank you to the city council for everything you're doing for us, you're moving in a direction to take this police department away from being a training agency, and making it where people wanna stay, where people wanna retire, but you are really taking But you are really taking a big step forward in that, so thank you. And that's it.
Thank you.
I want to thank you. I want to thank you and Ron, seriously, for what you have done in the last two, three months. Because you walked into nothing, in, in my opinion. Every time I talk to you guys, every time I go down there, every time I talk to Tom and everybody else down there. I'm just impressed with the way y'all have taken this over, kept things calm and it built it back. And I'm really looking forward to these new officers being here, I really am.
It's looking good.
Yep.
And even Tom, uh, wants to be an officer now.
I know. You're telling me that, I was shocked.
So it's, it's looking good. And for somebody that came in, was working under the last administration, was just a part-time admin assistant. Who wasn't sure what his future held to him. And then as we moved along and he's still just an admin assistant, and now he's like, wait a minute. You know, I retired out of law enforcement from up north, I want to get back into this, this is looking good. So, I think that speaks loads.
It does.
And I apologize to the council members for having you come see me this week. But thank you again.
Thank you.
I hate having to partake in this stuff to you, but thank you for being there for us.
No problem.
Thanks for doing it, Chris.
No problem. All right. Any other department head, or we do with a department head?
We're good with department heads.
Okay, anybody on the council have something they'd like to speak on?
Yes.
Okay.
Florida Paddling Trails Association, the signs were sitting in the office over there since last August, I think. Um, Chad got, has the one beautiful sign up there at, is that Bateman Park? Yeah, and it, it would be great if we could have just a little unveiling ceremony for the sign that's going to go up at Blue Run Park. So we need to nail a date down. Um, Dorsey DeMaster, the executive director of Florida Paddling Trails, lives in Citrus Springs. But she is a busy lady traveling all over the state. There's a huge membership right now and they're going to do a membership drive outside of the state. And haven't been on the site, take a look at it. We already have our spot on the map, we're on their app. And we have a little paragraph describing Dan Allen as the place to go to put a kayak in. I've gone on a couple of their trips and I'm going to tell you something. There, these are people who are serious kayakers, they're, they are paddling in kayaks, thousand to two thousand dollar kayaks. And when they're done kayaking, they go out on the town, wine and dine and spend their money. So this, this is a good thing for Dan Allen.
Oh, good.
So we have Friday, July fourteenth, Friday, July twenty-first, or any day of July twenty-fourth through July twenty-eighth. Except for the morning of the twenty-seventh.
Is the budget portion, the week of July twenty-third?
It would be during the day.
So you said fourteen, twenty-third?
Friday the fourteenth, Friday the twenty-first, or the week of July twenty-fourth through July twenty-eighth. And it would be during the day, we would invite Jim Cooliar, the DCBA, and then, uh, we would reach out to, um, Dorsey. As Ms. Cabbage said, and then have her reach out to whoever her contacts.
Do some PR.
That she wanted to invite, of course, we would sunshine it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, he's out that last week, I'm, those dates weren't mine.
So if you wanted to do the fourteenth or the twenty-first, I mean, you're not. The last week works for everybody except for Councilman Lehman, I mean, I, I, whatever y'all want to do.
Whatever you guys want to do. If I can bring my grandkids, I can do the fourteenth, I forgot, they're going to be here. But, no, no, I'm, I'm just joking, yeah, they're coming. But no, those, I can do either day.
It could be like a twenty-minute ceremony.
Yeah, no problem.
You guys decide.
Yep. I'm good with it.
Well, y'all just need to pick a day and then we need to get back with her. I mean, the fourteenth might be a little bit soon if y'all want to do some PR. And of course, we have to get with the county and see when, um, Mr. Cooliar might be available, but.
He's not back until after the fourth, so.
Yeah, that's, his email said he would be back after the fourth, so.
Right, so I'm, I'm, I can work, you know.
I mean, if you want to push it out to the twenty-first, or if you want to, I mean, then of course, just. Or if you want to do it that last week, I mean, I, I don't know, it's up to y'all.
We want to push it out to the last week, that way we can get things together.
And you want to do it during the week, then, you know.
Get the change, get the change.
Anytime you want to do it, it'll work. I'm sure four of us can get her. And we can't talk, but we can get her.
Do you, it'll be sunshine.
Just kidding. All right.
You can talk about the sunshine.
Yeah, there you go.
I'll tell you what.
So we'll need to coordinate with her to make sure.
I will, I will. I will coordinate with her and Jim Cooliar and, like I said, we'll get it out to the DCBA, we'll put on the website, Facebook and.
So you'll coordinate with them and let us know the date.
You know, you guys pick the date, these are the dates that she's available.
Got you.
So when you pick a date, then I'll let her know the date that you all picked and then we'll, hopefully, Jim Cooliar, if he's not available, somebody else from the county can.
Twenty-eighth. Twenty-eighth.
So that would do it lunchtime and I'll, I'll buy the refresh.
Well, the twenty-seventh.
How's that?
Huh?
How about the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh.
The Thursday.
Yep.
So it's not on a Friday?
What, what, I'm fine, twenty-seventh, that worked.
Twenty-seventh, what day of the week is that?
It's a Thursday.
Excellent.
Any particular time?
Noon time, lunch, I'll bring the food.
Well, now you're serving food for everybody.
Yeah.
All right, seven, seven twenty-seven at noon time.
Say that one more time.
Seven twenty-seven at noon time. Thursday, July twenty-seventh at noon time.
All right.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, anybody else got anything?
I did brief, really, really brief, I just, um, you know, I guess letters to the editor. Uh, several weeks ago, there was a letter to the editor about an issue that we're talking about, there were some inaccuracies in it. So I just want to implore that if we're going to, if a councilperson is going to make an opinion known in a letter to the editor, that we make sure that we have our facts straight. Um, I also just want to offer an opinion that when we take a residence letter to the editor and mark it up and distribute it in a public meeting. I find that to be a disrespect to the resident, because just like we have a right to write letters to the editor, everybody out there has a right. And for a person in a, in a council seat to make their own comments and redistribute it out to the public. Is just disrespectful to the residents of the city. So that's all I want to say.
I'd like to respond to that. That letter was in a publication, the Riverland News, everybody picks up and reads. And I don't believe there's anything wrong, since it attacked me personally. In fact, it said, there's somebody, basically, there's someone in council who's being, quote, influenced by someone outside of this community. To bring more short-term rentals into this community. And I felt I had to respond to that. That's a, because you know what? Being influenced is a felony. I don't want to go back and forth. It implied that somehow I was doing something outside of the law, because for me, a councilperson, to take influ, to be influenced. In some way, maybe monetary or a gift, I'm sorry, I was not, I am not going to stay quiet on that. The rest of her comments, no problem, they were all in line, but they're not going to mind my character.
That was my council comment, I wish not to have a debate, thank you.
All right, anybody else? And that's why I don't read media or social media, stay focused.
I just have a quick comment, I just, I, uh. This is hurricane season and I have a job at a company that restores electricity after hurricanes. During the last hurricane, Ian and we were driving from Dan Allen, because they let us stay in our houses, through the hurricane down to Orlando to, to camp for, to start staging. So if I do have to miss a meeting, you know, because I'm with them, and what we do is, as soon as it's safe, they give us lists of every call. That everybody does to the, like Duke, and we have to go out and physically check the wires, I'm out with alignment, to make sure that there's no wires down. So if I do miss a meeting, it'll be because of that.
No problem.
Okay.
No problem. Okay. Anyone else on council have a comment? All right, Andrew.
Council, the only thing I have, we went over Senate board one seventy, I think sufficiently, so, you know, um, there's that. There are a number of course bills that are being signed. I will, uh, be bringing you some information on some of those and some of the new mandates that have been handed down by the legislatures, such as some affordable housing issues and so forth. Which will change, uh, you know, some of the internal workings and some of the things that staff has to do for reporting. But I will keep you apprised of those as they come, that's all I have for now.
Okay. All right, now I think we have a public comment, right?
I do not have anyone signed up and I have no one on Zoom, but it looks like Mr. Porter would like to speak.
Uh, Dave Porter, one-one-eight-three-five, East Blue Cove Drive in Dan Allen. Uh, two things. So I think tonight we kind of got rid of the boogeyman on the county doing fire inspections, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if that's the case, I think we had an open issue that a lot of the businesses in Dan Allen haven't had a fire inspection in years. Because we didn't follow through on, when we got rid of our fire department. So I just encourage the council, we need some kind of a plan going forward. To kind of contact them, either in the newspaper or letters or something like that. Letting them know that they're on the hook for doing the annual inspections. Because I think we've heard a lot of feedback from residents that we don't want to be singled out, having to do fire inspections. So I think that's important. Um, the second thing is, and this is just, I think, a comment, but, um, I, I know your, your, um, meeting agendas. Um, the people, the public, is supposed to address the council chairman or the mayor. And I think that's the same respect, that people get that same respect. So, like mentioning people in the public and by name and stuff like that is, um, kind of disrespectful. So I think it, that goes both ways. So if people come up and start speaking directly to someone on the council, that's not correct. But singling out the public is, is fair play, right?
Right.
Appreciate your consideration.
Good point. Anybody else in the audience like to speak? All right, nobody else out there? All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, second, I'll later.